Good evening, everyone. Oh, mics are working well today. Welcome to the October 6th Board of Trustees Meeting. Can we please stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Camille, will you please call the roll?
Present. Present.
Present.
Present and trustee Darrell Taylor had surgery, so he won't be with us this month. And that will take us to appointments. And I'm asking for a motion to appoint Serena Matoe as a member of the zoning board of appeals to an unexpired term ending December 1st, 2028.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? I don't know if Serena is on... Oh, okay. We're not on Zoom today. We are, just don't have it. Okay, so that's going to take us to public hearings. We have been talking for, I think, more than a year now, Gary, about short-term rentals.
Oh, yeah.
So we're going to close the public hearing today, but it is still open. The proposed law has been posted online. I'd like to ask our attorney, our village attorney, to give a summary of the law that we're proposing so that we can ask for any feedback, close the public hearing, and then ask the board to vote on that.
So I think the board's proposing a really fair law here. I worked on it hard. So basically, if you want to use your property as a short-term rental, you're going to have to register the property each year now. You're going to have to request a permit. It's done by permit. You're going to have to request a permit, and that starts on April 15. And there's going to be 10 permits issued village-wide. So if you're late and there's already 10 permits issued, you have to wait till the next year. And the permits are going to be issued on a first-come, first-served basis. And the permit is good for one year. It will run annually. The year is going to run from June 1st to May 31st. And there's going to be a yearly fee that's going to be set by this board. And I think that the board's going to start the yearly fee at $650.
That's correct.
One good thing about this law is if you want to use your home as a short-term rental, each year, the building department is going to have to come in and do an inspection to make sure your house complies with all the Village codes, New York State codes. The restrictions on these permits is, once you get the permit, it's going to be a four-night minimum stay on the rentals. There's going to be a maximum of 100 nights rentals per year, per permit. And then the renter must comply with all Village ordinances, especially those pertaining to noise, occupancy limits, and garbage. So what that means is it's the owner of the property that's going to be responsible. So if there's going to be noise complaints, it's going to fall on the owner. So the owner is going to be subject to losing the permit and face a fine of $1,000. So it's going to be very important for the owner to make sure that the renters comply with all the laws. And then, yeah, so that's going to be it. That's kind of the high points. It's posted online. It's about a six-page law. And I think the board is proposing a fair law. So it allows people to use their houses to supplement their income. But it also puts a lot of responsibility on the owner who's going to be making the money to basically self-police the property.
Right. Thank you, Gary.
You're welcome.
And this law came up about a year and a half ago, I think, at this point, maybe almost two years, because we were receiving complaints about potential short-term rentals and parties happening and a lot of disruption to the neighbors. So we sat on it for a little while because we wanted to see how New York City's, they passed a law and how that panned out. And then eventually, we determined that there were some things we can do now. We can always make some revisions if needed so that we can make sure that the quality of life is sustained here. And so I think, Gary, thank you for that good summary. So I'd like to take us to... Actually, I'd like to close the public hearing unless there's anyone here that would like to weigh in. Yes?
Good evening, everyone. Anthony Fiori, is this going to affect anything with zoning? Like, people trying to finish their basements or anything?
No, it shouldn't, Anthony. So what's going to happen is if somebody illegally finishes their basement and wants to use the basement as a short-term rented property, the building department's going to go in each year to make sure that that didn't happen. And if the property's not in compliance, then they're going to have to ask for the permits and pay fines and all that other fun stuff.
Okay. I've seen a lot of finished basements coming up.
The process hasn't changed. If anyone has to get permits for anything, so it's not changing. What's changing is if you want to have a short-term rental, you have to register. You have to have an inspection every year. So the building department will be coming into the property to check it.
All right, so I'll make sure.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Yeah. What if someone does it and doesn't register? Is what our clerk just asked.
That's a good question. Then we bring them into court. Then they'll be issued a violation because they'll be in violation of this law. And then I'll prosecute them in the court. And it's subject to a $1,000 fine, basically, per occurrence.
Right, and it could be $1,000 every day.
Every day.
But I think typically, if there are some disruptions, there are going to be complaints made. And I think based on those complaints, then the building department will have the authority to go in and check. Okay, anyone else? How do we ask anyone on Zoom if they have anything else? Okay, so I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing, finally.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And I will actually take us to resolution number two, authorizing a... I'm asking for a motion authorizing the proposed law to the Village Code relating to short-term rentals.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? You figured that one out, Camille. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, board. If you have any questions, you can go on the website, take a look at the law that was drafted. And you're welcome to contact anyone on the board or contact Village Hall if you have questions. The second public hearing, I need to ask for a motion to open the public hearing to consider amending the Village Code for traffic and street regulation, traffic control, photo violation monitoring system. Gary, if you can give a summary of this?
Sure, of course. So we've been working hard on this. This is the bus patrol. This is the cameras on the buses to catch violators.
Is your mic working?
Is it?
That's better.
Okay, to catch violators passing school buses, when school buses are stopped. So what happens is the vehicle and traffic law authorize us to pass a local law to enter into an agreement with the company to install the cameras on the buses and monitor it. Everything's going to be done by the police. So our police are going to review it. The school boards, both Eastchester and Tocco, have to opt into this also because both school districts operate buses in our jurisdiction. And then, so what happens here is that it's the registered owner of the vehicle that would be issued the summons, not the driver. So it's like one of those things where if you pass a light in the city, you get a notice, a fine notice. And the fine's going to be $250 for the first occurrence. And then it goes up incrementally after that.
Okay. So the public hearing is open. I'd like to ask if there's anyone who would like to weigh in on this?
We have to open the public...
I didn't open it? Oh, may I have a motion to open it?
So moved.
We always have fun at these meetings.
Second.
It was seconded by trustee Lang. May I have... All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Would anyone like to weigh in on this? This law? Anyone currently? Anyone have questions? Okay, it's pretty self-explanatory. I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And thank you, board. So I'm going to take us to resolution number four, actually, authorizing a proposed law, amending the Village Code for the traffic and street regulation. We just discussed. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, board. And I'm also related to that is the... I'm asking for a motion to authorize an agreement with the Bus Patrol America LLC for use of a school bus stop arm enforcement program. So that's the organization, the company that we will use to enforce that. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, board. And that'll take us to the adoption of the minutes for September 15. May I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And that will take us to the first opportunity to address the board on any agenda items. If there's anyone here who would like to address the board on any agenda items, you may do so now. Hello? Just tell us your name and address.
My name's Lynn Hewitt. I live at 32 Lawrence Ave. And Will and more Kate Hewitt are here with me.
Hello, you guys.
Working as a neighborhood association to try to address the traffic issues up and down Lincoln Avenue. And we wanted to first thank Chief Rota and his department. They've been so helpful, actually coming out and looking at each site. And I know that you have the engineering study today on the agenda. So we want to thank you and hopefully get that through. And then, just as we'd ask, as you look at the comprehensive plan for Tocco and development up and down Marble Dale, as it's going over where Marble Dale starts to intersect with Lincoln, we hope that as business develops, there's more traffic. So we're very aware and it's part of the plan to add the crosswalks there and make it safer for our train traffic, our commuters, and the kids to walk up and down Lincoln.
Thank you for your feedback.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board on any agenda items? No one else, okay. So that will take us to resolution number one, related to what we just talked about, authorizing, setting a public hearing for November 3rd today to consider adoption... Sorry, next month. Consider adoption of the reimagining Tocco comprehensive plan. May I have a motion?
So moved.
To that public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. And at that time, if you'd like to come back and talk a little bit more, the public hearing will be open. We appreciate your feedback. A lot of times, we ask for it and we don't get it. So we're ecstatic when we do. Thank you so much. I'm going to take us to resolution number three, authorizing a modification of the license and fee schedule for a permit and inspection for the short-term rentals. Our village attorney just noted that it's going to be $650 per year. That's $500 for the permit, $150 for registration. May I have a motion from the board?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, board. And it'll take us to resolution number six, authorizing an agreement with the engineering and design for professional services relating to the intersection at Lincoln and Oakland, which we talked about earlier, to address possible safety concerns. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That's money well spent. Thank you, board. May I have a motion authorizing the closure of Warren and use of Village streets on Friday, October 31st, for the annual Westchester Park Civic Association Halloween party and parade?
So moved.
Second.
That makes the deputy mayor's heart go pitter-patter. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, board. And we'll take us to resolution number eight, authorizing the Village Court to apply for a justice court program grant in the amount of $30,000. And this is related to monitors in offices and to ensure greater safety for the employees at Village Hall. David, our village administrator, would you like to say anything more? That's pretty much it. So may I have a motion authorizing the Village Court to apply for this grant?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. And we should pay the bills. So may I have a motion to authorize the approval of vouchers in the amount of $288,575.81?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, board. And that'll take us to departmental reports. And we do have the chief of the police department here, Chief Larry Rota.
Good evening, Village Board.
Chief?
I'd like to start off by announcing our Pizza with Police event. We just formed it earlier today for a date of October 22nd. We're going to do it at the Fisher Park again this year. We had a great time there last year. And the park was contained. And we had kids running everywhere. It was a great night. So we'll hope for good weather. And we'll see everyone out on the Wednesday, October 22nd, starting at 4:30. With the fall upon us, I want to also remind our residents not to place large amounts of leaf piles in the streets obstructing traffic, particularly fire engine safety and ambulance safety. We need to keep the roadways clear. Also, I'll speak on the highway department's behalf tonight as well. We want to, with the heavy storms that are potentially coming throughout the late fall, to keep our sewer drains clean, to prevent flooding in the area. It's a big issue. For the month of October, we're going to be conducting speed enforcement at multiple locations throughout the village as a public awareness campaign of our 25 mile-an-hour speed limit. I want to remind the public that we were one of the first village boards this administration to change the speed limit from 30 to 25 once the state law was passed, given the authority for the village to drop the speed limit from 30 to 25. So we're going to be out and about throughout this month, enforcing our speed limit as a public awareness campaign and also enforcing pedestrian crosswalk safety. Tomorrow, Lieutenant Kennedy is going to be going to Long Island to a AAA ceremony. I might have mentioned this, but tomorrow is the actual date where we're going to be receiving this award. I'm super proud of. We are going to be receiving a Silver Traffic Safety Award from AAA. And they look at our yearly crash stats, our yearly safety upgrades, and our yearly enforcement. And this year, we're getting the Silver Award, which is upgraded from the Bronze Award. So we're super excited and proud. So look out for some social media pictures for tomorrow. Regarding the crime tip of a month, believe it or not, this actually just transpired this afternoon, where we started getting complaints of people receiving scam alert phone calls. And they were impersonating themselves as a Tocco police officer and advising the resident. And they know them by name to say that they didn't report for jury duty. So this is a whole other level now, where they're actually impersonating us as the police to say this person did not appear for jury duty and they needed an immediate payment to avoid arrest. So we did a last-minute social media campaign just about an hour ago. We're going to be out and about tomorrow, speaking to people and following up on some casework regarding it. We are in the process of investigation to track down where these calls are coming from. So public awareness, do not... And this is for all fraud calls. And we speak about this to the seniors all the time. Do not answer the phone call from these people that call asking personal information and then giving you a story that's so believable that you actually feel compelled to go out and pay them. Always call us. We are happy to receive these phone calls. And I look forward to making an arrest on this matter. Thank you, Village Board. Any questions?
Anyone on the board? So thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Do we have Frank DeMarco anywhere? Okay. So we'll ask Elaine Profizano to do the library report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor and members of the board and community. Few updates. We had a wonderful evening celebrating Swadish Pashnanda's retirement at Wicked Wolf on September 25th. And you all made it so lovely. There was so much joy in the room. And everyone made it such a memorable night and a touching tribute. Again, we wish Swadish well in her retirement. Did you know that censorship is so 1984? Stop by and check out Miriam Safras' display of banned books for Band Books Week, which ends Friday. And 1984 was one of the books on that. So I'm going to tell you our October events. Is this too echoey?
No, it's okay.
Okay, great. Let's start with the teens. We have Teen Game Night this Wednesday, October 8th, at 6 o'clock. Join us in our new teen room for board games and card games. And there'll be snacks. And then we have Teen Movie Night on Wednesday, October 22nd, at 6 o'clock. It's ages 11 and up. Hocus Pocus, starring Bette Midler and Sarah Jessica Parker and Catherine and Jamie. I think my daughter will come down an hour away for that one. Then we have children's programs. We have Paws and Tails, which was canceled for today, but will be made up on Thursday, October 9th. You can come to read with Therapy Dog Lucy. And then Graphic Novel Book Club in the library is Friday, October 10th, at 4 o'clock for 3rd to 5th grades. The book will be Stunt Boy In The Meantime by Jason Reynolds. Pumpkin Painting with Ms. Florence, that's always a favorite. That's Tuesday, October 14th, in the community center at 4 o'clock. From ages 4 to 10, decorate your pumpkin with a spooky or silly design. Then we have pre-K yoga with Budding Buddhas on Thursday, October 16th, at 11:00 a.m., ages 2 and 1/2 to 5. Legos in the library, Friday, October 17th, at 3:30, ages 4 to 10. Junior sewing class, tote bag, Monday, October 20th and Monday, October 27th. That's ages 8 to 12, and that's at 4 o'clock. And then we have a Kids Craft Goofy Face Pumpkin, Tuesday, October 21st, at 3:30, ages 4 to 10. Oh, I hear some enthusiasm back here. Wait for the next one. Halloween Magic Show with John the Magician in the community center on Thursday, October 23rd, at 3:30. Join us for a special Halloween treat. Musical Adventures on the Library will be Monday, October 27th, at 12:30 p.m., ages 0 to 7. And that's brought to us by Concordia Conservatory of Music. And then we have Kids Craft Dia de los Muertos, Day of the Dead book, on Tuesday, October 28th, at 3:30, ages 4 to 10, with Ms. Florence. And of course, we have our regular storytimes with Ms. Florence on Tuesdays and Fridays at 11:00 a.m., ages 2 to 6. Let's sing and dance and read with Ms. Nora, October 9th, 11:15, ages 6 months to 3 years. Pajama Storytime, remember? Pajama Storytime?
I do remember.
Wednesday, October 22nd, at 6:00 p.m., ages 2 to 6. Bilingual Storytime with Ms. Inez, Friday, October 24th, at 11:00, ages 0 to 5. And DPW Day. I want to mention that, since Frank is not here. That is going to be Saturday, October 25th. And that's from 10 to 2, right? We're going to be there. It has TBD because we're not sure what time we're doing storytime. But we'll be there. The library will be there and have a table.
David, it is 10 to 2, right? DPW Day.
Yeah, you don't want to miss that. That is wonderful. And then Pumpkin Patch Storytime in the community center will be Friday, October 31st, at 11:00, ages 0 to 5. I know, it's a long list. October is always bursting. But let's get to the adults. We have Visible Mending Workshop with Nicole on Monday, October... Oh, that was tonight, so we don't have to mention that. I'm doing memoir writing on Thursday, October 9th, at 1:00. Eating in Harmony with Nature, the Excretory System, that's online Tuesday, October 14th, at 7:00 p.m. And we have Cooking with Mayor Ann Dino and Shelley Mayer Wednesday, October 15th, at 6:00 p.m. And they will be making bacalaitos?
Bacalaitos.
Bacalaitos, thank you. I don't have my reading glasses on.
Basically codfish fritters.
And they're delicious. And Senator Mayer will be making noodle kugel. So...
Sweet, sweet noodles.
Sweet noodle kugel. So everybody come for that, and you'll be getting a taste. And that is October 15th at 6 o'clock. Modern and contemporary art from the collection of Hebrew Home at Riverdale, online Monday, October 20th, at 2:00 p.m. Poetry reading with poet Harriet Shankman, online Thursday, October 23rd, at 7:00 p.m. In-person painting Pumpkin Patch, Saturday, October 25th, at 12:00. And this is again for adults. And we're having our first Classics Book Club. I'm doing Frankenstein Monday, October 27th, at 6:30 p.m. If you want to hear the real story behind that ghoulish tale. And then, of course, we have our yoga every Friday. We have, at 9:00, we have Tai Chi on the 21st at 9:00. Mahjong every Tuesday at 1:00. Knitting Mondays at 1:00. Tech help appointments at 2:00 on Thursdays. And we have our ESL Beginning Class on Wednesdays at 10:30. 11:30 is Advanced. And Spanish class is at 1:00. And finally, I just wanted to mention that thanks to Westchester County Board of Legislators, we have just started our program, one-on-one job coaching services in the library. And that is going to be on Wednesdays at 5:30 and Saturdays at 10:30 a.m. People will be able to make one-hour appointments with a job coach that will help you work on your resume. Any questions about jobs? We're very grateful to the Board of Legislators for providing that grant. And in order to do so, you just need to call the library. We'll put you on the list. We'll put you on the list. Thank you for your patience as I went through the list.
Thank you. You want to tell them the phone number to call?
Certainly do.
Thank you, Elaine. Yes, you, you may applaud. Camille? Camille, because you know, we can't even get her a mic, so she's gotta stand up.
For those property owners who received their late tax letters, I've placed the bill number on the top right corner. You may use this bill number to pay your taxes online, but please note, if you do have a lien, that is not allowed to be paid online. Thank you.
Ouch. Okay. Gary, do you have anything?
No, anonymity.
David? Nothing else? Okay. So, just a few dates for you guys to remember. Salsa Fest on October eleventh, which is this Saturday. I would love, love, love to see you there, especially the young people. It's early enough, three to six. Come dance some salsa with me. We are still celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, and I'm also looking forward for people coming and wishing me well as I start to prepare for my departure as mayor. Next month will be my last meeting, and you will be blessed with the new mayor, our deputy mayor, Kara Cronin, so I will tell you more next month about that. We also have, and I know the deputy mayor will let you know more about this, the Creepy Candy Crawl on October twenty-fifth, from three to four-thirty. We have lots of fun stuff happening on Main Street. Please bring these young people out, and those young at heart as well. We have our village board work session on October thirtieth, at seven p.m., and our next board meeting on November third, the day before Election Day, at seven p.m., so please be here. And that'll take us to Board of Trustee Reports, and Trustee Lang, your second-to-last report.
That's right. Thank you, mayor. And it's been a true honor serving this community. So thank you to everyone. So first of all, beautification continues their fundraising efforts, and they'll have a nice announcement for us come, the next meeting. I thought that they had it for us this meeting, but we'll just assume it'll be in November. Tucco's Community Center will be hosting New York Presbyterian Hospital. They will be giving out free flu vaccinations for eighteen and over on Wednesday, October twenty-ninth, from ten a.m. to one p.m. And, and again, serving this village has been a true honor, and I do have one more meeting, and again, I'm truly grateful to every resident in this village and the board as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Trustee Lang. Trustee Gachion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We will start with the History Committee. Lot of RevFest two-fifty stuff going around the county, which is really great for us history, we history nerds who, who love it everywhere. Nick Zanzano attended the RevFest two-fifty at Crotton Point Park this past weekend and shared Tucco's Revolutionary War history with some of the attendees. Elaine Probenzano and Eagle Scout Malachi Bernard will be doing a walking tour on Main Street with Ecap in their after-school program. Malachi was here and told us about his project, which is really great, and will provide some useful information to the Ecap students. The History Committee will have a table at DPW. I do not miss Elaine see a table for Candy Crawl, but we'll, we'll work on that. Their Facebook. As always, their, their Facebook was very busy, very happening, over ten thousand views this past month, with the highest access being to the late Richard Forlione, very deserving. We'll move on to veterans. Last, the last week in September was Gold Star Mothers and Families Week. We had some really nice ceremonies at the county and here in the town and village, so I want to thank the deputy mayor for coming out and saying a few words at our Gold Star Mothers Monument. Eastchester and Tucco veterans will be joining the Rotary Club at the closing ceremony tomorrow for the Tunnels to Towers Mobile nine-eleven exhibit. That's at four p.m., closes at four p.m. at the ICS parking lot. So if you haven't had a chance to go in it and you want to go see it, make sure you're there before four p.m. If you are scheduling way out in advance, November eleventh is Veterans Day, and the tribute will be at Lake Isle, and November seventh, at noon time, will be the county's Veterans Day program at Lazden Park. One last thing, no matter who you're voting for, we want to remind you that early voting starts in, on October twenty-fifth, so start making your plans to vote. Oh, that's it, ma'am.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Good evening, everybody. So, from the Tucco seniors, they are hosting their annual Bingo Night, which is their major fundraiser for the year, on October eighteenth. Doors open at four, but the event is from five to eight. It's fifty dollars. I believe you get three game tickets and then some raffles with that. That's at the Tucco Community Center. All of that information is posted on our website. It's on, on, on the TV channel. It's on the Tucco Seniors website. It's on our social media pages, so if you have any questions about that, just let one of us know. But it's Saturday, October eighteenth, so, and it's a really fun event. It gets really crowded in there and pretty wild, so fun time. October sixteenth, and Sarah Deris spoke about this last week, maybe, last month, she might talk about it again today, the seniors have, well, the Icon Foundation hosts its annual gala in, to benefit the Tucco seniors, and that's at the Surf Club, and that is on October sixteenth. From planning and zoning, the zoning, the planning board meeting is on Tuesday, October twenty-first, at seven p.m. I think the work session is tomorrow, correct? There are several items on the agenda, one for a new, a return for a new swimming school on Marble Dale Road, another for a small subdivision on Marble Dale Road. One is the expansion of the dance studio on Main Street, one for a special permit for a math and reading school right next door, and then a site plan for a new hot yoga studio on Marble Dale Road. The zoning board also has several, several items on their agenda, which include a, one, parking, driveway widening at one sixty-seven Dante, a special permit at the dance studio on Thirty-three Main, and basements, a special permits for legalizing basements at Seventy Lake, and to, Two Hundred Alpine Place, and then the math and reading school next door. So if any of those are of any interest to you, we do encourage people to attend zoning and planning meetings, because they, you can get a lot of information. Oh, zoning, thank you, is this Wednesday, October, October eighth, at seven-thirty p.m. The work session's at six forty-five. We do encourage people to attend those meetings, especially when there is an item that might be of interest to you. We like people to be informed of what's going on. As the mayor mentioned, the Candy Crawl, the Creepy Candy Crawl, and its official title, will be Saturday, October twenty-fifth, three to four-thirty. We have some very fun things in store. There'll be stilt walkers and a haunted trolley again, but then we have some more new, new surprises in store. Last year, we got about eleven hundred people here, so please come. It's, it's fast, three to four-thirty, because the candy goes fast. There are a lot of crafts, there'll be pumpkins, there's all kinds of things. But it's a really good opportunity for you to meet the local business community. That's why we started the Candy Crawl, and that's, I always want to bring people back to why we started it. We started it during the pandemic, where we were just trying to get people out on Main Street to remind you that there are businesses here, and that they need your love, and, and you should be shopping local. So that is the origin of the Candy Crawl. It has grown, and it is wonderful, but please remember our businesses, because they support us in so many ways. Every time you're, the PTA asks for raffle prizes, every time that people ask for a donation, they always raise that, they answer that call. So please come out and support them, and come and say hi, and talk to them. By the way, there is never enough candy. Last year, we estimate about fifty thousand pieces of candy get given out. So if it is in your heart to donate candy, we are more than happy to accept your donations. You can, and people come, they come drop them off here at Village Hall, you can give them to Jackie, or you can give them to me, you can drop them at eighty-eight Maple Avenue, but we are more than happy to take your candy donations. I am not too proud to ask. That morning is Get Acquainted with DPW Day. So if you've never been to DPW Day, that is also a really great event. It's from ten to two. You have an opportunity to climb inside of the garbage trucks and the backhoes, and play with the buttons, and honk the horns. It is a fan favorite. There's a bouncy castle and a lot of other fun things happening that morning. So it is a family fun day on October twenty-fifth. Please come out, make sure you make it to both of those events. You will not want to miss either of those. This coming weekend is the Columbus Day Parade and Fair at Lake Isle, so the, the fair lasts all weekend. I believe it starts Thursday and goes through Sunday, and, or Monday, actually. So it starts Friday and goes through Monday, and then the parade is Sunday at noon. It's starting at ICS and then going down to Lake Isle, so please make a, a plan to go see that if you, and, and show up and wish everybody well. The last thing I want to talk about is the Comprehensive Plan, which is on the agenda, and we will be talking about that next month. The Comprehensive Plan is, the proposed Comprehensive Plan, the final draft, is on the website. Please go ahead and take a look at it, because this is the plan for our future of the village. And the Comprehensive Planning Team worked really hard on this. This is something they, you know, several of your neighbors and friends sat down and really thought about the vision. We elicited a lot of feedback from the community, and we want to hear from you, so please come, take a, take a look at it, read it. It's a little long, but it's worth the read. And then I just want to say a final thank you to the Tucco Road Race Committee. We did the final total, and we raised twenty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars for the Tucco Community Center. So I just want to say a huge thank you to that committee, because they worked so hard. And that's it. I hope you all have a great week, month.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And I just have to say that we have to really thank the deputy mayor for stepping up. Our Road Race Director had a family emergency and had to pull out abruptly, and she just stepped right in, and she made it look like it was nothing. So you guys are very fortunate to have Kara Cronin as your deputy mayor, soon-to-be mayor. I was hoping that the kids would stay here, because I wanted them to close out the meeting, and we're almost done. So I'm gonna have them come up here and help me close out this meeting, because I love the young people to help, if you don't mind. It won't be that long. I also wanted to just alert everyone that every year, this board does dress up for Creepy Candy Crawl, and if you'd like to join us, this year, we are Super Mario Brothers. So please.
I need a Princess Peach.
We need, we need some Super Mario Brothers and, and Super Mario Brother characters. Also, just to let everyone know, that the Westchester County Legislature voted unanimously for the purchase of the Ward House, for those who've been emailing and asking me what's going on with the Ward House. I did speak to the county executive, and I never celebrate until things are complete. There are a few more steps that need to happen, but that is great news for those who are, you know, interested in making sure that the Ward House stays intact. The, the next steps have to do with the county executive signing off on it. It has to go to council, and, and then hopefully, the closing will happen sooner than later. So that's some good news for the friends of the Ward House and everyone else. And I also want to just thank Shiloh Baptist Church. They had their founders' breakfast last week, and they surprised me and honored me with a Trailblazer Award in my role as mayor. I said there, and I'll say here, it's nice to be recognized. It's much nicer to do the work without seeking recognition, so I appreciate it nonetheless. And that is it for me. We have a second opportunity to address the board, is if there's anyone here that would like to come forward, and I promise, we are soon done.
Hello, everyone. This is Sam, seventy-two Main Street. So, Salsa Fest is this Saturday, three to six p.m., but I don't know if you know, but immediately after that, it's a short walk, the Tucco Pride Committee is having a National Coming Out Day celebration at the Broken Bow from six to eight on the same day. So if you want to come join us after, you know, all your dancing, just to sit down, settle out and chill, embrace community in a safe, loving space, you are welcome to come and join us.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else want to address the board?
I do.
Hello? Is it, oh, I.
Hi, board. Thank you.
Just tell us your name and address.
My name is Mary Hollinger. I live at eighty-five Lincoln.
Hi.
I wanted to say thank you for the engineering study on Lincoln and Oakland. I know that Lynn has been doing a wonderful job advocating. She speaks for a really large and appreciative contingent of moms in the area. I also wanted to say, a reminder about Marble Dale and Lincoln. I know it's a big and challenging project because of the width of the streets. The width of the streets is also what makes it so nerve-wracking to, to cross, and I felt that way when I was just headed to the train. I feel that way a lot more strongly now that I'm also pushing a stroller to the playground. If you are looking for an excuse to come to the neighborhood, thank you also for approving the Halloween parade that I'm hoping to organize this year. I'm very excited. It does actually start at the intersection of Marble Dale and Lincoln, so feel free to look at just how wide and difficult it is to cross while you're there, but we hope you'll come. Feel free to reuse the costumes from the Candy Crawl. We'd love to see the Super Mario Brothers there, too.
Oh, nice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the invite also. Okay, anyone else would like to address the board?
I would like to from Zoom.
Okay. Tell us your name and address.
Pam Hudson, sixty-four Midland Place.
Hello, Pam.
Hi. I wish I could be there in person, but I'm laid up with a broken foot right now, so.
No problem.
Need to keep off of it. Anyway, I was just wondering if you could give an update on the use of the building across from the Broken Bow. I believe it's an lead building, and there was talk of using it for apartments. Can you give it, that building, and also the one right down from the bow, which looks like it's been kind of in renovation for a really long time?
Yeah. Gary, do we have any updates on?
On the building across the?
From Broken Bow?
It, it applied for a use variance to put apartments in there. That was denied by the board. Well, I think, I think the application was, was withdrawn, so that's just still pending out there as a commercial building.
Okay, so we don't really have too many updates right now, Pam.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
But as, as, you know, I can always reach out to you or Kara as we learn of any new updates.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the board? Okay, we have some kids getting antsy, and I would love to get them up here to help us adjourn this meeting. So come on up, kids, anybody who wants to. Come on up. Do you ever want to be mayor? You don't know, come, sit. Come here, you can sit. I'm going down.
Hi, mayor.
That's very cool.
Sit here.
Who can be the mayor?
You can be the mayor. Okay, here. All right, here we go. You're gonna say, on three, you're gonna say, "Meeting adjourned," okay? Ready? One, two, three.
Meeting adjourned.
Good night, Tucco. Thank you for your help. And that's it, the meeting's over.